At this time, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, September 9th, 6:00 p.m. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Dan Flores, followed by Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much for the introduction, and good evening, council members, residents, and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Dan Flores. I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Colton United School Board of Education, and today, here on behalf of my colleague, Ms. Joanne Thoreen O'Heda. And this evening, I was going to read a little bit of a tribute to her late husband, who just recently passed, Mr. Bernard O'Heda, Sr., a proud resident of Grand Terrace, a Vietnam veteran, and a longtime law enforcement officer. So if you indulge me, I'd like to read just a brief snippet from a letter written by Captain Arnold Sampson, who is a native of Baltimore and one of the few black U.S. Army helicopter medevac pilots that flew during the Vietnam conflict. And he flew with Bernard O'Heda, who was his medic. And so I'll just read a little bit of that, and then we will have our invocation, so. "From March of 1968 until late February 1970, I served as a medical evacuation helicopter pilot. My unit was the 68th Medical Detachment, and it was located in Chu Lai, Vietnam. The general callsign for the medical evacuation mission was 'dust off.' What made that specific duty assignment different was the fact that we had a four-man crew, consisting of two aviators, a crew chief, and a medic. Of special note were the medics, like Bernard O'Heda, Sr. Medics had to commence emergency medical care that involved giving gravely wounded men something to stop them from bleeding out, and at the same time, comfort the wounded and give them hope that they would survive both the ride and the care that was coming. There were no bad medics. Still, there was something intense and great about Bernard. Bernard was quiet and unassuming, an incredible presence on the missions during which we flew together. Many years after the war was over, I learned that Bernard worked in the emergency room of one of the two hospitals where my unit delivered patients. He asked to be assigned to the dust-off unit because he wanted to be closer to the critical moments when emergency medical care was needed most. Now, nothing in Vietnam was truly safe, but working in a hospital was much safer than sitting in the back of an unarmed helicopter. The fact that Bernard requested to be part of the dust-off unit speaks volumes about his courage and the dedication he had to saving lives. When you see a Vietnam veteran, consider shaking his hand or giving him a hug. Please join me in asking God to watch over Bernard O'Heda, Sr. The time to give special people their flowers is while they are still alive and can see them, and if you can find it in your heart, say a prayer for this good and brave man." I will add, if you had an opportunity to meet Mr. O'Heda, you would know that he was a man of few words, but a man of very big action. In addition to his service in the Vietnam conflict, he was also a longtime deputy with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and served as a school resource officer, which makes sense because he fell in love with an elementary school principal. And while he is gone, we are proud to recognize him not only throughout our schools, but throughout the city of Grand Terrace where he lived for many years. And in the spirit of that, I would like to ask all of you to join me in a special prayer. And my apologies if you'll just indulge me one more minute. I do want to share something that Ms. Joanne had written as well in response to that statement, and it says, "I can't thank Captain Arnold Sampson enough for the beautiful tribute to my husband as his former colleague and comrade during the Vietnam War. The skill of this man made it possible for his crew to come home surviving what would have been a fatal accident. I called Mr. Sampson two days before Bernie passed and informed him that he was gravely ill. At that time, Bernie was still able to respond and recognize who I was speaking to. When I said the name Arnold, he shouted Sampson!" I'd like to express my deep gratitude to Mr. Sampson after saving Bernie's life so that we could meet decades later. Bernie passed away on July 30th, 2025, after suffering several months of extreme pain and suffering, and I knew it was God's way of saying that he needed to return home. Thank you to everyone who's been a part of his life and made our life together beautiful for us and for our children." And with that, I'll ask that we bow our heads and pray to Lord God to watch over all of us here in this wonderful city of Grand Terrace and the greater community and our country, that we recognize, pay tribute, and honor those who sacrifice to protect others, whether it's in the armed forces, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's public safety or first responders, those who work for the city that provide safety for our children, for our grandparents, for our roads, for everyone that calls this community home. We ask that you watch over this council, that you bless them with wisdom and guidance to make the decisions that help this community thrive and fulfill the vision that you, Lord, have for the city of Grand Terrace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible]
Okay. I apologize. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Sabino?
I'm here.
Mayor Hesse is absent. Mayor Protem, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that very beautiful tribute. Joanne, thank you, you know, for sharing your husband with our community. We've been very blessed, and I apologize, but God rest his soul, we will continue to pray for you and your family during this time. Thank you. All right. Council, do we have any additions, removals from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you.
Wait, do you have one?
Yes, so item D-15 under consent regarding the 22565 Franklin Street, that was heard already as a housing authority item, so that will not be considered on this side, agenda.
Any others? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, sorry. I would like to pull items eight, 11, 13, and 14 for discussion.
Eight, 11, 13, and 14?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Do I have a motion on?
I'll make a motion for one through seven, nine...
Pardon me, Mayor Protem?
Sorry, I apologize.
We're on item A.
I apologize. Thank you. I apologize. Public comment. I moved too far. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. We may also ask or request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Special presentation, Crystal Wilson and Aria Wilson. If you please come forward to the podium, and please share a few remarks with us and share with us your work today.
Good evening, council. So Aria started Girl Scouts when she was in kindergarten. She told me she liked being a Girl Scout because she wanted to make the world a better place, and Girl Scouts was the way to do it. She has never stopped trying to make a difference since she announced her plan 10 years ago. She volunteers with many organizations, and I have the animals to show for it, since there's always one she has to save. The most recent wildfires that spread over so much of California created a need for what Edison called "public safety power shut-offs," which left some Grand Terrace citizens without power for days at a time. We read about people who had spent all of their money on food to fill their fridge and lost everything and had nothing to feed their family. Some asked for help; we can only assume that others who needed help just went to bed hungry. Aria saw a problem in the community and went to work to solve it. She built a box with the help of her stepfather to house donations of food and books. This project, she called Lunch and Literacy. She put the box in front of Susan Pettapark and the senior center, since our seniors are the ones most likely to go quietly hungry. She taught people how to crochet in exchange for donations to fill her box. We come to check on the box every Friday to make sure it's well-stocked and in working order. It has been so much fun and so rewarding watching her bring to life the dreams of a five-year-old. She absolutely makes the world a better place. Great job, Aria.
Aria, would you like to say anything?
Nothing.
Well, we're incredibly proud of you, and on behalf of the city of Grand Terrace, we would like to recognize you for your outstanding achievement in completing and installing your Silver Award project, Lunch and Literacy, and a free community pantry, and mini library at Susan Pettapark. Your initiative reflects a deep commitment to service and literacy and stands as an inspiring example of youth leadership in action. Aria, I wish so many other kids could take your lead, continue to pave the way. We appreciate your work, so thank you for that. Council, do you have anything you'd like to share? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, young lady, and also to your parents. Are we going to do a photo op here? Yeah, that's what I wanted to actually ask you.
Yes, I have that noted if council has no other comments? All right, if you can come join us here, we'd like to take some photos with you. All right. Consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Currently, I have noted eight, 11, 13, 14, and 15. Are there any others? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar for numbers one through seven, nine through 12, and nine through 12?
Motion.
Second.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Matt Brown. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Public hearing?
We have to go back to the consent.
Sorry. I apologize. Okay. Item number eight. Who pulled this? Was it you? All right. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. I just had a few questions on the item, so I don't know how you want to address it. Conrad, do you want me to direct them to you or Ms. Tillman?
Go ahead. Item eight is the Willdan Agreement, right?
Okay, okay. So as far as this contract, so we eliminated a position, and we're contracting the services out. I was just curious about how you're going to monitor those services and make sure that we're maintaining, maintaining or improving on the service level that we previously had when we had a full-time employee. So what's the plan there?
So we still continue to have our plans, once planned staff person, planning clerk who monitors the hours and the activity as far as building inspection, plan check, the routing, all of that. And then the plan check portion is just a percentage of the cost, so there's no hourly monitoring on that. The public works portion is pretty much the same, and then the only addition would be is the building official, and those are nominal hours and I'll monitor that, which is, you know, he's going to rack us for a couple hours here in a little bit. So, but we have the structure and the staff already in place to monitor the expenditures and the hours and the performance.
Okay. Will our residents or contractors doing business in the city receive improved service from the city under the contract, or is this going to lengthen approval times?
No, it should actually accelerate the approval times, because before we had a bifurcated plan check system, some went to Willdan already, some were done in-house. This way, it becomes a streamlined system. They're used to having our stuff in, our stuff come out. It becomes a much more streamlined process. We have a more organized time for when we do building inspection, and then we'll have a true building inspector versus somebody who's also the building official and building inspector and doing other things focusing on that. So we will be giving better service, and as far as the interaction, it'll be transparent to the user.
Fantastic. So my last question is, is this, from a budgetary standpoint, is this item break even, or are we saving money?
By the time we factor in our staff reduction, we are definitely saving money, in the range of $100,000, $110,000 dollars a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comment? No.
With that, I would move the item.
Do I have a second?
I'll second eight. It's only number eight, right?
Number eight. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 11, authorization to utilize Sourcewell and Omnia partners for cooperative purchasing.
Pardon me, Mayor Protem? I have you done as one through seven and nine through 12 were actually approved.
I think they intended to pull 11, so we'll...
11 was pulled, eight, 11, 13, 14, 15.
Yeah, we'll act like they did.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah, we can handle it in one of two ways. We can go ahead and answer the questions or have a discussion, and we can let the approval stand. If the council wants to, you know, rescind it, we can go backwards and rescind it, so totally your call how you want to proceed.
Let's just proceed with questioning. So, item number 11, I was, I would like some examples of types of services that you're planning on contracting out utilizing Sourcewell and Omnia.
So there's a variety of equipment that can be purchased through these cooperative agreements. So vehicles can be purchased. We recently purchased a maintenance vehicle. There are often discounts for using cooperative agreements. These are agreements that have gone through extensive compliance factors. We can track how these bids were gathered, but you can also purchase generators. There's a variety of types of equipment that can be purchased through these types of agreements. And with approving this action, what it does is it saves staff time because we don't have to actually go out and do the bid process because these contracts have already been vetted. And so all we're doing is bringing the item to council and developing our own agreement, and the agreement that supports the contract for the particular item is used as supplementary information to the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. So how will you determine which items we're going out to use these services for as opposed to running our own RFP or, you know?
It would depend on whether or not there's a cost savings to it. So for instance, our desire to purchase a generator using Sourcewell, we actually would get a discounted price to purchasing a potentially over $200,000 generator that would support City Hall. And so it would just, it would vary, but for the most part, we do typically go out to bid for most projects, but usually this is for equipment. So for services, we tend to do our RFPs, and that will continue.
So with the equipment, and these guys typically handle commodity-type products. So a generator is a generator is a generator, a copy machine is a copy machine, it just really depends which vendor you buy it from. So it's not unique one-of-type things, and it's not unique services. So we're really going to try and to get the best commodity price for this, and since they've already gone through the bid process through the overarching organization, they've met the standards for competitive bidding, they're able to give discounts because they're selling at a volume to multiple cities. So we'll look at their price, and we'll look at the market price, and then if their price is less, it gives us an option to follow that path.
Well, thank you, Conrad. I spent some time reviewing some of their existing products, and they actually, it's not only commodities, but they do services as well. They have several public agencies in California that were listed on their website. Some of those are services, and quite frankly, you know, my concern is sidelining our local vendors. I want to make sure that we're pumping our, you know, your tax dollars back into our community, creating jobs and economic growth here, and not contracting it out somewhere else just because it's simpler from a staffing standpoint. But I hear you loud and clear. We'll just keep an eye on what you're doing as these items come across the agenda, and if we need to look back at this, we can do that again at a later date.
And as far as local, our policy is that if there is an opportunity, and it is in the price ballpark, we do go local, especially Grand Terrace businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any objection calling for a motion for 11 and then possibly grouping 13 and 14?
Yes, 11's already been approved, if that's good with the council. So we don't have to take any further action on that.
Okay. All right. Items 13 and 14, back to you, Councilmember Brown.
Well, this is, I think this is your item, right, Adrian?
Yes.
So it's actually recommendation three on the item. I was curious as to what specific powers that are we delegating to the city manager? Are we just delegating to him the authority to sign the agreements? Or does it go beyond that as far as delegating our decisions on how those funds should be utilized when they're awarded?
Very good question. So on both items, you are delegating authority to the city manager to effectuate the transaction, and that would only mean signing the agreement, signing any documents that would allow transfer of the funds from, the settlement to the county for administration. That's really the extent of it, as background just for the public and for the council. So this is a lawsuit that was raised by several states across the country and some other plaintiffs challenging pharmaceutical companies regarding their contribution to the opioid crisis over the last few decades. In each of these cases, there has been a settlement that has been approved by the parties, and the way it functions is the state will receive a pot of money, and that pot of money will then be distributed to each of the cities that chooses to participate. If a city chooses not to participate, and I understand, the money stays with the state. Alternatively, if a city accepts the money, then the city can use the money for opioid education programs, things of that sort. Now, we did an analysis the last time around. The city, I think the last time, was going to receive maybe around $30,000, $40,000, something like that, but the administrative gobbledygook to actually administer the $40,000 would be way too costly for the city to do. And so what the city, what the state and the counties were recommending was have that money transferred to the county so that the county could develop a greater pot of money from all the various cities, and then they can develop a greater program using that money directing it to the entire county. So that is what most cities have been doing, because the money that they're actually receiving is not too much, and the cost of the administration, the headache of the administration, was too much. So in this case here, in each of the items 13 and 14, we're simply accepting the funds, we're authorizing the city manager to take the appropriate actions to accept the funds, and then transfer the money to the county for administration.
Fantastic.
All right. Is there any other action that's needed?
With that, I'd move the items 13 and 14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing? Before I move forward with the public hearing, I believe there might be an error. I believe that's presented by Shanita Tillman. Is that correct? For the public hearing?
Your next item is 16, right?
16.
Yeah.
That's Shanita's item.
Shanita's item? Yes. Okay, Ms. Shanita Tillman. Thank you. Sorry, there's a discrepancy with my documentation with my agenda. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Works. Excuse me. The staff report before you supports goal number one, ensure fiscal viability by providing transparent cost recoveries for essential services. The city of Grand Terrace does not operate its own sewer system. All sewer services are provided through the city of Colton, with residential billing administered by BRTAC and commercial services administered by the city of Colton. The last time Grand Terrace formally adopted Colton's rates was in 2014, with scheduled increases through 2017. Since then, rates remain consistent until Colton adopted its most recent update this past summer. That created a gap in the informal action, which is now being addressed by this resolution. In June 2024, Colton held a Prop 218 hearing with notices sent to all affected property owners in both cities. Following that process, Colton adopted an ordinance O-07-24 in July, and the new rates took effect September 1st. BRTAC and Colton then began applying those rates to Grand Terrace accounts. However, because our city council had not taken formal action, those charges cannot be considered validly imposed. This resolution addresses that issue by authorizing the prospective application of Colton's rates and ensuring that overpayments since September 1st, 2024 are credited back to Grand Terrace customers. There's no fiscal impact to the city's general fund because these sewer charges are handled by... And, and as far as local, our policy is that if there is an opportunity and it is pri, in the price ballpark, we do, we do go local, especially Grand Terrace businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any objection calling for a motion for 11 and then possibly grouping 13 and 14?
Yes, 11 has already been approved if that's
Yeah.
good with the council. So we don't have to take any further on that, action on that then.
Okay. All right. Items 13 and 14, back to you, Councilmember Brown.
Well, this is, I think this is your item, right Adrian?
Yes.
So it's actually recommendation three on the item. I was curious as to what specific powers that we're, are we delegating to the city manager? Are we just delegating to him the authority to sign the agreements? Or does it go beyond that as far as delegating our decisions on how those funds should be utilized when they're awarded?
Very good question. So on both items, you are delegating authority to the city manager to effectuate the transaction. And that would only mean signing the agreement. Signing any documents that would allow transfer of the funds from the, the settlement from, to the county for administration. That's really the extent of it as background just for the public and for the council. So this is a lawsuit that was raised by several states across the country and some other plaintiffs challenging pharmaceutical companies regarding their contribution to the opioid crisis over the last few decades. In each of these cases, there has been a settlement that has been approved by the parties. And the way it functions is the state will receive a pot of money. And that pot of money will then be distributed to each of the cities that chooses to participate. If a city chooses not to participate, and I understand, the money stays with the state. Alternatively, if a city accepts the money, then the city can use the money for opioid education programs, things of that sort. Now, we did an analysis the last time around. The city, I think the last time was going to receive maybe around 30,000, 40,000, something like that. But the administrative gobbledygook to actually administer the 40,000 would be way too costly for the city to do. And so what the, what the city, what the state and the counties were recommending was have that money transferred to the county so that the county could develop a greater pot of money from all the various cities and then they can develop a greater program using that money, directing it to the entire county. So that is what most cities have been doing because the money that they're actually receiving is not too much and the cost and of the administration, the headache of the administration was too much. So in this case here, in each of the items 13 and 14, we're simply accepting the funds. We're authorizing the city manager to take the appropriate actions to accept the funds and then transfer the money to the county for administration.
Fantastic.
All right. Is there any other action that's needed?
With that, I'd move the items, items 13 and 14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing. Before I move forward with the public hearing, I believe there might be a, an error. I believe that's presented by Shanita Tillman. Is that correct? For the public hearing?
Your next item is 16, right?
16.
Yeah.
That's Shanita's item.
Shanita's item? Yes. Okay. Ms. Shanita Tillman. Thank you. Sorry, there's a discrepancy with my documentation with my agenda. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Works. Excuse me. Excuse me. The staff report before you supports goal number one, ensure fiscal viability by providing transparent cost recoveries for essential services. The city of Grand Terrace does not operate its own sewer system. All sewer services are provided through the city of Colton with residential billing administered by BRTAC and commercial services administered by the city of Colton. The last time Grand Terrace formally adopted Colton's rates was in 2014 with scheduled increases through 2017. Since then, rates remain consistent until Colton adopted its most recent update this past summer. That created a gap in the formal, informal action, which is now being addressed by this resolution. In June 2024, Colton held a Prop 218 hearing with notices sent to all affected property owners in both cities. Following that process, Colton adopted an ordinance O-07-24 in July and the new rates took effect September 1st. BRTAC and Colton then began applying those rates to Grand Terrace accounts. However, because our city council had not taken formal action, those charges cannot be considered validly imposed. This resolution addresses that issue by authorizing the prospective application of Colton's rates and ensuring that overpayments since September 1st, 2024 are credited back to Grand Terrace customers. There's no fiscal impact to the city's general fund because these sewer charges are handled entirely as pass-throughs. Since BRTAC has already remitted those payments to the city of Colton, reconciliation will require coordination between BRTAC, the city of Colton, and the city of Grand Terrace. Residential customers billed by monthly should expect a credit on their November, December bill. And any commercial customers billed month, or excuse me, any customers billed monthly will see a credit on their October 25, 2025 bill. Staff recommends that the city of, city council adopt the resolution presented this evening. This action will formally acknowledge the sewer rates adopted by the city of Colton. It will also authorize their prospective application to all residential and commercial accounts in Grand Terrace as pass-through charges. And this action remains consistent with Colton's adopted rate schedule. And I am open for any questions.
Do we have any comments? Councilmember Wilson.
How's this going to affect Joe, Joe homeowner so far as residential rates? I know that question's going to be asked by our constituency.
So the rates that are currently being charged are $45.38. So those rates have already been being charged to customers. What is taking place is that any payments that have taken place since, since September 1st of 2024, those, you'll receive a credit on your account.
Very good. Thank you. I like credits. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Brown? I have a few questions.
Come on, just to clarify. She said any charges. The incre, the difference between the old rate and the current rate will be credited back.
That is correct.
Not the full amount.
That is correct.
Okay. And so again, state that one more time, how long those have been charged to the residents?
Since September 1st of 2024. And to, the previous rate was $34.33. So it would be the difference between that and the $45 and or as of, excuse me, as of July 1st, it is $54.46. So it'd be the difference between that.
Okay. And can you just clarify? I'm sorry, maybe I missed that. Will residents have to pay retroactively since we're barely acknowledging that rate at this time?
No.
Okay. Can you walk us through the reimbursement process? Because I know it's going to have to go through a process. Have you been able to talk to Colton and BRTAC?
They are aware of this action taking place tonight. We have yet to formalize how this is being coordinated until it's actually adopted.
Is there a deadline on when they need to come back with a resolution or a proposal on what that will look like?
Maybe I'm not understanding.
How, how long before they, before they come to some kind of determination of what that re, what that process is going to look like?
We'll have it by the end of the year.
I'm sorry?
We'll have it by the end of the year. I think it's just three months to get it done.
Okay.
And it'll probably end up looking as on your bill, it'll have credit for that amount charged against your next month's, your next two months' bills, depending how much it is.
Okay. And I'm not sure if staff or council is aware that on the July 1st statement, the residents of Grand Terrace had a $100 increase, approximately in that range, that they incurred on their bills, to which on September 1st, it was retroed back with a credit of $108.92. Did, is that on account of the sewer, the sewer rate?
So what I do know is once this was brought to our awareness, they did stop billing at the higher rate. So that could be the reason why you received.
No, to answer, to answer your question, that was an issue with BRTAC's billing system.
Okay.
So it's not related to this at all.
Okay. Okay. And I just wanted to clarify for those present and for those who received those bills. And with this being the issue, that we clarify where that lied. That's all I have. Thank you again, Ms. Shanita, for your report. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. Before we move forward, we'll have our city attorney go ahead and read the ordinance.
For this item, it's just a resolution. I'm happy to read it if you'd like.
Sorry.
And so.
It's in my notes.
No worries, no worries. There is an ordinance created, related to it. It's regarding the, the city of Colton, but they've already adopted it, so. But for the record, I'll just go ahead and read it. So the motion would be to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Grand Terrace, adopting the sewer service rates established by the city of Colton and confirming their application to Grand Terrace properties. Is there a motion? Any second.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Jeff Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes.
All right. New business, introduction of the 2025 California Building Codes, presented by Patrick Johnson, Wildin Engineering.
You have to move this mic up. Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and staff. My name is Patrick Johnson, the current acting building official for the city of Grand Terrace here. I have the pleasure of being here tonight to present the first reading of the 2025 code adoption for the California Building Codes. Every three years, each jurisdiction in the state of California is mandated to adopt the California Building Codes and make amendments that are reasonably necessary because of local climate, geological, or topographical conditions. Modifications must be filed with the California Building Standards Commission in order to become legally effective by January 1st, 2026. In adopting the 2025 Building Codes, we must amend certain sections of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to reflect the changes that have occurred within the new codes. All these changes that are occurring are editorial, essentially keeping everything the same, but updating 2022 to 2025 throughout the municipal code, Chapter 15, Buildings and Construction. Climate geographical requirements that are specific to the city of Grand Terrace are not changing from the previous code cycle. Chapter 7A of the California Building Code and Section R 337 of the California Residential Code are being replaced by the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, which will still regulate structures constructed in high-fire hazard areas as identified in the fire overlay map set forth by the California State Fire Marshal. Recommendation is recommend that we waive the first reading of the adoption of the California Building Codes with amendments and a second reading to occur at the city council meeting on October 14th, 2025.
Thank you so much for that report. Do we have any comments? From council? No comments. Easy as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
No public comment. All right.
Yes.
Your own.
All right. Thank you. So the title of the ordinance for introduction and first reading is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, amending chapters 15.04, General Provisions for Building Code, 15.08, Building Code, 15.09, Existing Building Code, 15.10, Residential Code, 15.12, Electrical Code, 15.16, Plumbing Code, 15.17, Green Building Standards, 15.18, California Fire Code, 15.19, Historic Building Code, 15.20, Mechanical Code, 15.21, Reference Standards, and 15.22, Property Maintenance Code of Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, and adding Chapter 15.11, Wildland Urban Interface Code of Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, adopting the 2020, I'm sorry, the 2025 California Building Code, Volumes 1 and 2, 2025 California Fire Code, 2025 California Existing Building Code, 2025 California Historic Code, 2025 California Energy Code, 2025 California Administrative Code, 2025 California Reference Standards Code, 2025 California Residential Code, 2025 California Green Building Standards Code, 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, 2025 California Electrical Code, 2025 California Plumbing Code, 2025 California Mechanical Code, 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. Thank you.
There you go. Earning your dollar tonight. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
All right. Jeff and Matt. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you. A future agenda item. We have city manager Bolowich.
Bring it down for me. I'm not quite there. So this is a future agenda item being brought back. There is a request that we respond in some manner to the San Bernardino International Airport as to their overflight and noise. Apparently, there's a feeling by residents that there's an increase in the amount of noise over the, over the community. So the recommendation is that staff select a delegation of one staff member and one resident or of any group, as council feels like, to meet with San Bernardino Airport and IBDA management to discuss overflight, what our options are, and to make them aware of our concerns. And then staff to help facilitate that meeting in whatever manner possible. And since it's future agenda, we took a stab at what, what we think council would like. And it's open to you to provide direction from there.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any comment? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. Well, our residents have clearly expressed their concerns to us about the increase in these low-altitude flights and the impact it's having on quality of life here in Grand Terrace. I think this meeting's a really important step to ensure, one, their voices are heard, but two, to actually get some modification to those flight paths to reduce the noise and impact in our community. So I appreciate the work that you put into this item and staff, Conrad. I, I would like to throw out a motion though, if that's okay with my colleagues. And that would be, I'd like to move the item forward with an amendment to include the mayor in the delegation since he's the spokesperson for our community, along with Councilmember Wilson and Ken Henderson to serve as the resident representative. Thank you.
City manager, any?
Do we have? Then, then I'll, I'll second it.
But do we have any public comment?
Public comment first.
I'm sorry. Do we have any public comment? Ken Henderson? Okay.
Mayor, council, Ken Henderson, 23,000, Fench Street, Grand Terrace. I wanted to thank the council for your quick work and Mr. Bolowich's quick work regarding this item. We had discussed it for the first time at the last council meeting. So very pleased that the council is prepared to take appropriate action. In addition to the proposed modifications by Councilmember Brown, if I could be presumptuous and make another recommendation with respect to the composition of the delegation, and that would be to include, at least as an alternate, my neighbor who appeared with me at the last meeting, Justin Relaford, R-E-L-A-F-O-R-D. He's traveling at, at the present time, but he's expressing an interest. I'm giving him an across-the-neighborhood education on municipal management in the public sector and he's excited about it. And so at least as a, as an alternate, he would be willing to participate in this process if the council was agreeable to that proposition. Thank you again for your time and attention. Appreciate the council's work in this regard.
Johan Gallo?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, pro tem. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street. This is in reference to the airport noise from San Bernardino. I don't for the life of me understand why we're not talking to them about restrictions like Orange County did. Those of you that have never flown out of Orange County have missed the real opportunity when the airplane takes on a, on a steep climb out and then shuts back the power so it doesn't have all this noise going over the community. Might want to think about that when we're meeting with San Bernardino Airport. The other thing is you can almost set your watch. And since I don't sleep much anyway, sleep is overrated. So from 2:00 AM in the morning to 4:00 AM to 6:00 AM, there's constant flights over our airspace. And so it was a little different when it was military flights. You expect that. I could always tell when I ran the Firestone store in San Bernardino if the C5 Galaxy was coming in loaded or empty because the engines would just scream. Same thing applies with these flights that are going over our town every day since the buildup of Prime and all the other deliveries that are now leaving the airport. So I would hope that they would consider some type of noise abatement that is still safe to the pilots in the flights, but also takes care of our community so we don't have all this hellacious noise constantly for all hours of the day. And we set time limits for the airport. Orange County, when I was flying, which was for 30 years, if I couldn't get in Ontario, I wasn't getting into Orange County after 10:00. The airport was shut down. You were deferred to LAX. So we might want to think about hours for the airport as well. Thank you.
No more public comment.
Councilmember Jeff Allen.
You know, in this staff report that we've got here, and you're, I'm sure you read it in the background, the first paragraph, it talks about how in second quarter 2025, San Bernardino Airport recorded 116 noise comments from 27 households with concentrations in ZIP codes 92346 Highland and 92410 San Bernardino. And then there's a note that says Grand Terrace addresses also appear in the data set. And what it did was then in the, in the next paragraph, you'll notice it said then in that they implemented new satellite-based flight procedures to produce more consistent, quieter paths that minimize overflights of Highland Redlands. So I think the secret here is, is the number of complaints they get and where they're coming from. You know? So maybe we need to put the word out to the residents of Grand Terrace with a phone number. Here's where you call to make your complaint. The more complaints, you know, obviously that, that's taken into consideration. I didn't realize it was, but it must be. And yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion? Is there any other comment or discussion? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Could you please just repeat your motion?
My motion is to accept staff's recommendation with the amendment to include the mayor as a member of our delegation, along with Councilmember Wilson and Ken Henderson as the resident representative.
Did you want to, did you want to add an alternate for Mr. Henderson?
We could, we could add, if, if the council pleases, to add Justin Relaford as the alternate resident member in the event Mr. Henderson is unavailable.
Hey, Ms. Henderson, is Mr. Relaford amenable to that? You've, he's, he's agreed to do that? You're speaking for him?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
All right. Item number 19, Conrad, City Manager.
Okay, another future agenda item. So, the item was brought forward to consider establishment of a citizens committee. That's misspelled, for the Peta family, Community Center and Library. And staff believes that that is actually a very good idea, and something that we're going to have to do to get the library in the area off, off the ground. Something that's really going to be vital to begin this process. But, given that there's a small pool of volunteers in the community, and it seems that when we put together a committee or a group, it's the same small people over and over again. And we have a fairly big item coming forward here in the next 12 months that staff recommends, that while this is a very worthwhile and important thing to do, that we don't want to overtax our volunteers and overutilize them, and that we defer this and bring this back for action in, did I put a date on this? I think it was December, right? We can bring it back for action in December of '26. And it's, from there on, once again, future agenda items, we kind of shoot in the dark and hope, hope we hit what you're looking for, so it's up to you from there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any feedback or comments from council?
Question?
Councilmember Wilson.
Who is the Pat family?
It's a typo, it's Peta.
Oh, okay, Peta, all right, just, I didn't hear it. And then, in addition to that, so you're going to defer formation of a Community Center Citizens Committee at this time. Has the city council had an opportunity to redline anything in relation to what we've been shown so far?
As far as get secondary changes, no. And I think that's something that's going to, we, we have a template. And with that template, it gives us a chance then to get the citizens committee involved when the time comes to actually start fleshing out what's there.
It might, it seems to me that since we're charged with the cost to support this endeavor, that before it goes to the Community Center Citizens Committee, we should at least have some kind of a workshop to be able to redline this thing to a point where it's feasible, because at this point, I don't think it is. I don't think we can, in other words, we can't support it. You know, it's, it was a, an aggressive design by the architect, and God love him, that's great. But unfortunately, we're not in the business of receiving awards. We're in the business of serving the community. And it was totally out of scale for what we were interested in doing on that, on that property. So, just as I suspected was going to happen, when you turn an architect loose on a piece of property, they go a little nuts. And that's what we got. So, we have work product at this point. We've already paid them a certain amount of money, and it's not anything near what we can either support as a community or will, will use within the community. So, it would seem to me that we should tread carefully before we open it up to a community, a, a, a center, or what do you call it, citizens community, committee, when we're not even really sure we can even do this thing.
I think that's one of the reasons he's talking about deferring it, is for that very, one of the very.
I'm not seeing a stream here, is, is the problem.
So, the, well, I said, we're open, this is a future agenda, so we can defer this with the instruction that we do a workshop so that council can provide clearer direction.
And I might mention, just as a point of order, I have absolutely no information on this, because unfortunately, when we had our crash in relation to the computer, that was never fixed, and so I'm operating completely blind. And so, if I'm bringing up things that have, have already been spoken to or addressed in the agenda, that's terrific, but I don't have anything like that. I've got the same thing the public has.
And, and you're fine. What I'm, what I'm saying is, is that since this is a future agenda item, we're open for any direction the council may give. And one of those directions could very well be to put together a workshop with the council to provide redline and feedback on our, a more.
I think that's our best, best approach.
Value engineered project, is probably the right word. And then, and then defer to bringing that forward to a committee.
Councilmember Allen.
So, I think both of y'all are saying the same thing, just differently, a little bit differently. That's how I understand it. And I, I agree with, with both, because, you know, this is all real early in the, in the, in the process of where the, and, and stage is going to be. This, we're at the very beginning. I guess in, in your 17 steps, or wherever, whatever it is, we're like number one, or zero, or number one, but however. And I think it's okay, this is my request for a future agenda item. I know that we aren't, the, the city is not in a position to take this on. If there was a citizens committee that had came up with some final resolute plan or something, I realize that. And I think this is a, you know, a smart move on, on your part to want to defer it for later. I mean, nobody's trying to kid anybody here or bamboozle anybody into thinking that we're going to have a community center and library in a year or two, because that's just not the case. It's, but, you know, I just, I don't think that, I don't even think we need a workshop before next year, you know, because we're not even in a position to put a porta potty up there on that, on that piece of property right now, you know? But after, after, after next year, at the, towards the end of next year, then, we'll, we'll be in a position, because events will be behind us, and we can start making these future plans and all that sort of thing. So, I agree with that, and I agree with what, you know, Councilmember Wilson's saying. I think you're both saying it for two different reasons, and it's the same thing, and I agree with it.
So, would, would a resolution that we come back with a workshop before the end of this fiscal year, that'll put us before July, and it'll give a chance to look at it, and then the intention to have a citizens committee revisit that in November, December of '26? Is that, is that a reasonable?
I'd like to give my input, if that's okay. As someone who sat on a citizen committee prior to being appointed, and then elected to my seat, there is, and, and as we've seen with our different committees that serve the cities, there's not continuity with attendance with those seats. A lot of times, we see our volunteers excited initially, but then we lose them over and over again. And as we saw during the, the safety committee, the citizen safety committee, we even had those who misinterpreted the initiative that went on the ballot, and even worked against their own work from when they sat in the seat. And so, I, I don't agree with even moving forward with this as a future agenda item. I, I suggest that when we are ready, when we have good information, and when we even think we might put a porta potty there, that then we have those conversations during public comment if we need to hold a workshop or a town hall. But I don't believe that we have the level of commitment in the community to be able to, to be able to move something like this forward due to the number of people that we continue, continue to see drop off in several committees as we see through the city. That, that's what I have. Thank you.
Another, a full spectrum of opportunities. And that's, that's why we bring these not very well fleshed out, so that we can get full input from the council.
Do we have a motion of how anyone on this dais would like to proceed?
I move we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
All right.
And just for the record, there was no public comment. Go ahead and vote.
Before you go forward, define staff recommendation. Recommendation is here? Or recommendation that we do a workshop at some point? Or recommend that we just postpone it and bring it back next year?
Your recommendation to postpone the item, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you, so, you're talking about the printed recommendation right here?
Yes.
With no additions to it? That the city council defer formation of a Community Center Citizens Committee at this time and direct staff to return following the outcome of the upcoming sales tax ballot initiative with a recommendation on committee structure, membership, and scope of work.
All right, seeing that we have no public comment, we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear before we went off on some tangent. Okay. Item number.
Item number 20.
20.
Here on again.
Another future agenda. We're cleaning these, these books off on this stuff. So, this was a recommendation to explore the formation of a Firewise Committee, which, read, once again, is a worthwhile project, has value to the community, and is very, very important. There's a little bit of a recommendation, a different recommendation from staff. You all have, you all have packets on what a Firewise Committee is. It's working with Fire Department to help, help develop community plans, community input to manage future fire threats, especially in the wildland urban interface, and, you know, community-driven, and it should eventually have some impacts on our, our insurance rates, and certainly on the survivability and the, the future of the community in a fire. With, with the same concept that we're stretched in on committee members, staff recommendation is, is that there is a great deal of work to be done before this ever gets to a committee. There, there's documents, all kinds, I mean, there's just work that has to be done, months of staff work, to get to a point where then we can actually bring it live to a group and have something to do. So, the recommendation is that council directs staff to begin this background work, putting together the, the, the different documents, different information that we'll need in the timeline, as we laid it out here, and then bring this back when we're ready, complete with the work, which will probably be, surprisingly enough, sometime after November, and for, for action, and then to establish the Firewise Committee.
Thank you. Do you have any comment? Councilmember Allen.
Yeah. I, I don't know the answer to this question, and I just thought of it. Do you know the nearest community to us that has a Firewise certification? Is it Lytle Creek, or? I know Lytle Creek has one.
We've got the brains here in the office, so you can.
But I don't know.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me? I'm also in the public comment. I don't know if there's someone else for this as well, but I'll just tag on to what Conrad's saying. The closest FireSafe Council is Mountain Rim. First of all, I'm Jared Doughton, a community member here. I've lived here for 13 years, and I also work for San Bernardino County Fire Department.
Yeah, we met. And I'm glad you're here, Jared, thanks for showing up. And so, you said, Mountain Rim? Rim, Rim of the world?
Correct, yeah, so, Mountain Rim FireSafe Council, and, and ultimately, they're kind of the mothership that steers the majority of the FireSafe Councils in the inland empire. Specifically, the inland empire FireSafe Alliance is something that they meet quarterly, usually somewhere at Cal Fire Headquarters, County Fire Headquarters, Forest Service, and they provide tremendous support to communities that already have kind of a body established and an interest that has developed organically from that community. So, I, I apologize. I've spoken with a few of you at various times, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys all at once. And based on Conrad's recommendations, you can start the time, I don't need to speak forever, but I'm always available to this body for, for any of this stuff, as a community member, but also as a, a, a member of public safety as well. But as it relates to Firewise, these principles are fundamental. They're foundational in what it takes to protect communities for a lot of different things. But ultimately, it opens up doors for funding sources. And as we educate ourselves based off these Firewise principles and concepts and educational tutorials that I encourage all of you to explore a little bit of, you will find that as you see these funding opportunities, and as you apply for them, you already have the capacity, as the body that you currently are, to apply for these funds. And as far as that would essentially earmark money to provide for staff or consultation services, or whatever the case may be, to develop what needs to be done, whether it be home hardening, projects, defensible space, hazardous fuels reduction, all these things cost a lot of money. And what's coming down the road subsequent to the building code adoption, and that WUI Fire Code is going to come with some pretty strict stuff. It's going to be very difficult to enforce from a public standpoint. And in order to comply with the standards that are coming down the road, it's going to be very costly for homeowners. So, I, I think that there's going to be some, a, a good funding source coming down the line that I just want to make sure that the board's going to be aware of those opportunities. And as they see fit for the, the community that we have, and the unique nature of Grand Terrace, there might be some, some good opportunities coming down the line. But as, as we mentioned from our folks in planning, the, the building code stuff is coming October, and then has to be rolled out first of the year. So, with that, a lot of this stuff is going to look like a pretty promising topic going into next summer especially. It's going to be buzzwords all across the state. Everybody's going to be trying to scramble. The compliance requirements for new construction is going to be very easy. That's just building and safety, checking the plans, making sure they meet the standards. But for existing construction, they have three years to comply. So, that's where that three-year plan that Conrad came up with, just to kind of build the framework and support for what we can ultimately support our community members in the capacity to help them out. And I think when I was speaking with Gabriel earlier today, providing links on the county's, or, I'm sorry, the city's website that can provide more information that's out there to, to the communities, because, and, and I wouldn't put this burden on, on you guys necessarily, because this, this type of thing, FireSafe Councils, they need to be formed organically. They need to originate from the community, kind of a grassroots campaign kind of thing. And it's kind of hard for city officials to force that on to folks when, with these new code adoptions that are coming down the line, we're, we're kind of doing it already. So, kind of with this would provide us more of a, an educational approach as opposed to an enforcement approach right out of the gate. And just know that it's, it's a process. And just like anything, these funding sources could facilitate other programs, not just the building code adoption and the WUI Fire Code, but also the, the Community Center, things of that nature. Those types of community developments, building infrastructure, support functions that are pillars of, within the community, are, are really what FireSafe Councils are and have become since their inception 20, 30 years ago. And, and we're kind of looking at that. It's, it's, it's very much on the forefront in, in where we are here. We're, if I say fortunate enough to experience a catastrophic fire within the 20-year, 30-year cycle, that you can learn from it. If we can take that, what we've learned, and carry it to the next, it's going to require FireSafe Councils, public education, bodies such as yourself to kind of facilitate that remembering, because folks forget. And that 20, 30-year cycle, it's, it's, it's not always something that we're going to live through or experience more than once, if that makes sense. But yeah, that, that's pretty much what I have to say about that. And, and as far as from the public, and any questions that you guys might have, you guys know how to get ahold of me. You could refer to the chief or Gary when he gets back in town, and he knows how to get ahold of me as well. Conrad can get ahold of me directly as well. So, I'm, I'm available to you guys for whatever you guys need. So I'm available to you guys for whatever you guys need. And I'm available for questions too.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
So.
Councilmember Allen.
I had some concerns with, I don't, you know, I know that Conrad said, that the city manager, city manager said that it's a very long, drawn out, heavy process to get these, one of these established. Now, I don't, I haven't ever done it, so I can't, you know, counter your argument there. But I would not want us to miss out on opportunities because there are people in our community right now that need help hardening their homes and they can't do it by themselves. And they don't have the means to do it neither physically nor financially. And so that's why I would like to see one of these established in a, you know, as soon as we can to make ourselves available for those, the funding opportunities that you spoke about. Thank you.
No, absolutely. And to reinforce what you're saying on that, that fire safe alliance, they are currently a 501(c)(3) that has a tremendous funding source available currently with a grant that they have. And they're looking at pilot programs in various communities throughout the county to engage and get startups going. So there's opportunities there. If we had a demonstration property that the board was aware of and we could look at that closely and get approval from the board to do that, that fire safe council or the fire safe alliance would be happy to facilitate that and be the pass-through agency for that funding to get that work done and to educate the folks that would benefit from it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment? No ma'am.
Did you want to speak up as the public now?
I would like to make a motion to move staff recommendations one, two and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, you get to sit down now. All right, future agenda items. At this time, city council may propose items for discussion and/or action at a future duly-agendized city council meeting. A consensus or majority of the quorum is required to take, to place an item on the future agenda. Do we have any requests? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's a future agenda item or not. So Conrad, I would like to agendize an annual performance review for the city manager and city attorney and I'd like to do that as soon as possible. Does that require a formal agenda request?
No, that's a part of the standard deal and we're due for that here in October, so.
Like first meeting in October then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're a little overdue. We should have done it at this meeting, but it'll be October.
Any others? All right. Council communications, councilmember Brown.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I attended the, on September 3, I attended the San Bernardino County Homeless Partnership Central Valley Regional Steering Committee meeting, of which I sit on the board representing our city. And at that meeting, we discussed the, some of the new reporting requirements for the HAP funding, round five of the HAP funding. And they changed some of the categories around for the funding. So, and, but as far as city of Grand Terrace goes, we, because we depend on the HOPE team and the county, you know, for our, when we have a homeless problem. So they're there also at the meetings and we discuss those together. The only thing else I want to mention again is I want to remind everybody about the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life on September 27. And I'm the team captain for the Grand Terrace team. And if any of you are interested in participating in this event, I'd sure be happy to have you on our team. We're trying to grow our team right now and get some T-shirts and make some money for, to help end cancer as we know it. So if you want to help me with that fight, see me after the meeting. Or you can go to relayforlife.org, relayforlife.org and you can sign up for my team or any team you want. Just make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the water resources meeting. And to paraphrase it, we had some very interesting speakers, very heavy-duty suppliers. And it is good to see that the state has finally kicked into gear in relation to this water emergency based on the way our climate is changing. So I will continue to follow this. Also attended last night at March Air Reserve Base, a ceremony for one of our own, Ava Ferncois graduate, actually her promotion ceremony to captain in the Civil Air Patrol. And it's amazing the fact that, and I wasn't alone. Of course, we had representatives there for certificates of acknowledgement. The amazing thing is, is that this has only happened a limited amount of times over the years. And so in the history of Civil Air Patrol, this has been a very limited time that a captain promotion like this has happened. And I want to really congratulate Ava and her mother for sticking to their guns and continuing their community service. I think it was really worthwhile and glad I attended. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. I want to apologize to the community if there were some flubs up here today. As councilmember Wilson stated earlier, he didn't have access to his computer and some of us, I didn't get access to some of my items until just a few hours before the meeting. And so we apologize for some of those things as we worked out our technical difficulties today. I also want to talk about, and I want to make sure that we understand changing gears that as every meeting here, I continue to try and emphasize that if something's going on in the community, please do not call the council members or the mayor, especially when he's on vacation because there's something that needs law enforcement attention. The mayor is not a deputy who can go out and address the issue. Even with issues with dogs out in the community. Recently, there was a resident who was attacked by two dogs who were loose and immediately it got posted to social media. There's nothing any of us can do if you do not report those issues. I did later connect with our city manager to ask, you know, hey, did you get a report? Did this come through? And nothing came through. We cannot help the residents of Grand Terrace if you're not going to hold people accountable. And so those are concerns. I did ask how many. I said, instead of the see something, say something for crime in the city, I'd also like a see something, say something dog edition. Because every time you open up any 92313 page, there's a post about dogs that are loose, that are out. But also there's never a conversation about anyone reporting it. And so please know that no one can help you if you don't direct those calls. Now, if you make the calls and you have trouble getting through, getting a response, or you didn't get any follow-up, give us a call. Give us a call so that way we can connect with our lieutenant, we can connect with our city manager to find out where the breakdown in communication is and such. But again, to the Grand Terrace residents, let's continue to keep our community safe. Let's continue to look after each other. And if those dogs are out, call. You're not, that is what our dispatch is for. That is what our dispatch is paid for. Your tax dollars are paying for those services. Do not say you do not want to bother our deputies. They put their life on the line for everything. Give them some of the small stuff too. You know, I'm sure they'd be glad to deal with something that isn't life-threatening and to be able to help our community members. That's all I have to say with regard to that. And again, our apologies for some of our faux pas this evening. Thank you. City manager.
Sure, and just to pile on, actually first, not bad for one of the first times. And if we're not screwing up, we're not trying hard enough, so. We're trying hard enough tonight. And not to pile on, but not just for law enforcement, for anything. Broken off fire hydrant, public works issue, animal control issue, if you see it, call it in. We pay the sheriff's department, the non-emergency dispatch, to be our dispatch service. We can go hire an answering service and get the same thing. So we're not taking away from the sheriffs when we call this. What it does, it allows the sheriff's dispatcher to call our animal control officer, to call our public works person, to call somebody that can resolve the incident. And they don't necessarily send the sheriff out to do this. They can pick the right person. So, but we can't send anybody until you call us. And we're not looking on any social media. You can post all day long, ain't nobody coming. So please, use the answering service, use the non-emergency number for what it's made for. They'll put you on hold if they're busy, they'll pick it up when they're not busy. And then they'll dispatch the right person to the right place at the right time and not hours and hours afterwards. So thank you. Sorry for beating up on that. I did want to really thank the water district. They had a major incident on Michigan Street last week. Professional, the way they handled it, the way they resolved it, the way they dealt with all of that. And from a selfish point from the city, how quickly they restored our street and put things back afterwards. So they, kudos to them for a job well done. And I want to thank our residents, particularly those of you who are using the dumpster here the last few months. We had some problems early on with people getting over eager and trash scattered everywhere in a mess. I really want to thank those of you who are using that, putting stuff in the dumpster, not leaving stuff laying around on the side. It seems to be something that we've grown into. And, you know, I appreciate people being respectful of that, that unique resource that we have. So thank you. That's it. And fire and police, you guys are good, right? Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next regular city council meeting will be held on September 23, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. Before we close, I'd like to take a moment of silence in remembrance and honor of Bernard Ojeda Senior. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.